We're going to move on to our 611 item. Presentation of rate study for the following districts. Kelseyville Water Works District Number Three, Northwest Regional Waste Water Collection System, and CSA Two Spring Valley. Director Harder.
Yes, Mr. Chair. What you have before you today is a consideration, or receipt of the presentation, more appropriately, of water rate studies for the four mentioned districts. We've been working with a consultant for about six months now.
Yeah.
Yeah. On rate analysis for all the four districts. Kelseyville has water and sewer, so it's essentially two districts. It's one district, but it's got two components to it. Spring Valley and then Northwest Sewer District. So we've been working on those rate analysis process. We've been working very closely with the Spring Valley Advisory Committee. We've gone through multiple revisions. We think we have something that they are happy with finally, after about four or five revisions. We recently presented down at the Big Valley Advisory Committee meeting, and we're here today to give you a presentation of what this rate structure looks like. So this is going to be the kickoff of the 218 process. So after the presentation, we would envision mailing out ballots the end of the first week of July, maybe July 12th. So the ballots would go out for a 45-day period for the customers in all four districts, and it would come back, and there would be the whole process with a public hearing before the board in mid-September, looking to adopt, and if the rates are adopted, to enact them for the November billing period. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Allison, and she'll go ahead and walk through the presentation.
Great. Good afternoon, Board. So as Scott mentioned, we've been working on four separate rate studies. So the Spring Valley water rates, Kelseyville water rates, Kelseyville sewer rates, and Northwest sewer rates. So I'll walk you through those four in that order. We have developed a five-year rate plan. Five years is the Proposition 218 timeline that you're allowed to adopt in one public outreach process. Prop 218 is the governing statute for how water and sewer rates can be implemented in California. So Scott mentioned the first rate adjustment, if approved, would go into effect for the November billing period, followed by July 1 billing period thereafter, July corresponding with your fiscal year cycles. So the main point is we want rates to cover costs. We want the utility systems to be financially self-supported. So we're looking at revenue increases to cover operating costs, infrastructure costs, maintain and accumulate reasonable emergency reserves. So if a water pipeline breaks, the districts have the money to replace it. And then on top of the revenue increase, we looked at rate structure. So that's how customers are charged for service. Water and sewer rates are very litigious in California. We wanted to make sure that the utility rates comply with Proposition 218, and then also comply with industry best practices, as well as recent court cases. Next slide, please. So very briefly, the Spring Valley Water Utility services about 400 residential-only connections, and rates have not been increased in an extremely long time. The Spring Valley system is proposed to receive fairly significant rate impacts. However, if we account for rates not increasing for the last decade, there's definitely some catch-up that's happening for their financial situation here. And as Scott mentioned, we've been working very closely with the advisory committee. We ran many, many, many scenarios, and this was their preferred option. So Spring Valley, Spring Valley's Water Utility is operating at a deficit. So revenues are not covering costs. So that's the first phase, is to catch up to existing operating costs. And the committee asked that we allocate a portion of their property taxes to cover water utility expenses, and that's a method of phasing in water rate adjustments. So instead of doing a full freight, you know, year-one, fully cost-of-service basis, we're supplementing partially with property tax revenues as we go along, and that helps mitigate and phase in rate adjustments. We are also planning to rebuild reserves to have that emergency funding available for any main breaks or other contingencies. And then down below, I have a chart of the proposed revenue impacts. So it is year-over-year successive rate increases. Not every customer will get exactly the percent increase there, but that's an overall system-wide average. So a lower water user would get less of an increase, a higher water user would get more of an increase. So this chart is the proposed rate structure adjustments. All of your special districts are billed on a bimonthly schedule, so each bill represents two months of service. Spring Valley currently has a $50 base charge, and that includes quite a lot of water use, 1,200 cubic feet. That's CCF. I know that's kind of jargon, but it's 12 units of water use. We do not recommend continuing a rate structure where you're including so much water use in the base fee. So right now, a person that uses only one unit of water and a person that uses 12 units of water pay the same bill, and that's not really fair. So Spring Valley recommended that we include only two units of water in the base fee. That was the preference of the Spring Valley Advisory Committee. Spring Valley also pays a capital fee that's proposed to remain the same. And then we've made a number of adjustments to the tiered rate structure. Under tiered water rates, higher levels of use are charged a higher rate per unit of water. It's kind of like electric peak pricing. And tiered rates have been heavily examined in court cases, so we were very careful to assign specific cost to these proposed tiers, and the tiers better align with average usage statistics for the Spring Valley area, where Tier One encompassing three units to nine units of use is the average use. Nine units is the average use. And then peak use and peak cost is assigned to Tier Two. So, you know, there's a lot of economics we can talk about behind the scenes, but the overall story is that we want to better align the rate structure with actual costs and current best practices. So after that November rate structure adjustment, the future years would be just increased by the proposed revenue increase year after year. So here's an example bill of, you can advance it, thank you, an example bill of an average customer using nine units of water per bimonthly period. So this current customer pays $64, and all of their use is in that free water allotment, the free base fee. Under the proposed rates, this customer would be billed for water usage in that Tier One, you know, rate component. So it's more proportional to how customers are using the water system. So this customer would have a pretty significant bill increase from $64 to over $100, but that is needed to meet costs and ensure the financial stability of the utility. So moving on to Kelseyville. Kelseyville has about 1,100 connections. Kelseyville has had inflationary rate increases each year, but it's not enough, unfortunately. Kelseyville is covering its costs, but just by a slim margin, and Kelseyville has run down its emergency reserves and fund balances. So to keep up with cost increases over the next five years and to fund some capital improvements, there is a need to increase rates at the percentages shown here. So Kelseyville has a very unusual rate structure, a very kind of old-school type of rate structure where water service is based on, like, per dwelling unit, per motel room, per RV space. That is not industry standard, and so we're proposing to transition to a fee structure based on meter size, which is the widely accepted industry-standard rate structure. Next slide, please. So that first year, we're readjusting the rates based on meter size, and then each subsequent year, we're just increasing by that overall cost of service applicable to the utility. So Kelseyville's current water rates also are a tiered rate structure. Luckily, this one doesn't have a base fee, which includes a lot of, you know, free water. We found that Kelseyville's average use is 18 units for a single-family home, so we are expanding Tier One from 15 units to 18 units to better align with current water usage statistics. Although Tier One now, although you get more water in Tier One, it costs higher per unit. And then Tier Two is peak or overuse, usage above 18 units, and that is at a higher cost. We're assigning peak usage costs to Tier Two. And then all other customers, so that'd be all multifamily, commercial customers, are getting an average rate, and that is because there's a wide variety of commercial customers. So a big supermarket might blast through all its Tier One usage right away, even though they're using, like, a very steady, you know, non-peak level of demand. They're just so large that they have to use a lot of water for their business purposes. And then you can see here the five-year rate proposal for the volume rates. So I'll give you the overview of Kelseyville Sewer, and then I'll show you a quick bill impacts analysis. Kelseyville Sewer is in really bad shape. It's operating at a deficit. It's spent down its fund reserves. So there's a big, big jump in the overall rate revenue proposal. And we did do outreach to the Kelseyville service area. We had a pretty well-attended meeting. We had about 30 people there or so. Explained the rate adjustments. There was some shock at first. You know, these are pretty high-rate increases, but there was an understanding that the utility has to meet its costs and is not doing so currently. So sewer rates for both Kelseyville and Northwest are fixed charges based on land use type, and the underlying apportionment of cost is based on flow. So that's the amount of sewer discharged into the system, and pollution. So how much you have to treat the waste that your different customers are discharging. And so your rate structure seemed very industry-typical, and the only adjustment was to add a new multifamily category. Multifamily customers use lower flow, have lower flow than single families, so it's more fair that they have a slightly lower rate. So the next chart is the current rate structure. You can just see that there's a schedule of fixed fees based on land use type. I also want to highlight the capital improvement fee at the very bottom of the table. So Kelseyville operations needs to increase its revenue dramatically, but Kelseyville capital, we are proposing a decrease. We don't see the need to have that capital fee so high. We don't have identified capital improvement projects that that fee needs to fund. So although operations is going way up, capital is going way down, and that definitely helps mitigate some of those rate impacts. So here is the chart of the proposed rates. So again, not every customer gets exactly that 65% increase. You can see some categories are higher, some categories don't go quite as high. It's a more moderate rate adjustment. And again, that is because we reviewed the underlying flow and pollutant loading estimates of each customer and more fairly attributed costs based on those parameters. And here's the additional rate categories. And then you can see at the very bottom of the chart, the capital improvement fee charged to all customers is proposed to decrease from about $20 to $3. So although other portions of the fee are going up, that part of the fee is going down, and that better reflects the cost structure of the sewer utility. So here's the example water bill for an average Kelseyville resident. This customer is a single-family customer using the average use, which is 18 units. So under the current rate structure, this customer is using most of their water in Tier One, a little bit in Tier Two, and pays $74 under their proposed fee. This person is using all of their water now in Tier One and is going to pay about $20 more on the water portion of their bill. Under the sewer charges that this typical or average customer is paying, this customer's, you know, domestic strength fee, that's the operating portion of the fee, is going way up. The loan fee is staying the same, and then the capital improvement fee is going down. And the sum total of all those impacts to the sewer bill is an increase of about $20. So in total, this customer is paying about $40 more under the rate proposal. So to wrap up with the Northwest utility, Northwest has about 4,000 customers. Northwest has also had inflationary increases each year. Northwest has a very slight operating deficit. It's not terrible at this point, but we need to reverse that deficit and start building up some fund balance to, you know, preserve and improve the financial health of that utility. So you can see there are some rate impacts here, the 20% plus 10%, so not as extreme as the other utilities, but there is a need to increase rates. And Northwest's sewer rate structure is very similar to Kelseyville, so based on fixed charges and the underlying flow and pollutant loadings were adjusted for this rate plan. So we have the schedule of fees here. So the typical single-family cost is proposed to increase from about $68 to about $80, and then subsequent rate increases would be 10% and then 3% thereafter. And then, again, we kept the rate structure pretty similar to current. We kept the same categories to provide continuity and just updated the flow and pollutant loading estimates. Okay, so to wrap up, we are proposing each utility service area get an increase. They vary. Some are more extreme, some are more moderate. But these rate studies are intended to meet the cost of service. These are actual budgeted costs to run your utilities. Without rate increases, these would all, you know, use up their fund balances and then come to the county and need cash infusions. These utilities need to be financially self-supported by their own rates. So we've assigned a five-year schedule of proposed fees to get to that level of financial security for each utility. And then on top of the revenue increases, we really focused on making sure the rate structures are more compliant with Proposition 218 and recent court cases. So we're here today to receive input. We'll continue working also with the local advisory committees. We'll finalize the rate reports. And then, as Scott mentioned, the next step would be the public outreach process. So every rate payer in these districts would get a notice in the mail. They wouldn't be surprised that all of a sudden their bill increased. They'd get a notice in the mail. They can attend public hearings. They can give their input. And then at that hearing in the fall, they can give public comment as well. And then, absent majority protest, the rate adjustments could be adopted for November. So I'm happy to receive comments and answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Director Harder, did you have anything else to add before we bring it back to the board?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members?
I have a question. I guess it's an equity question. Spring Valley is set at a 2 CCF, and Kelseyville is set as an 18. So it's kind of like the way we used to do street speeds. If everybody goes 40, then we're going to have to set the speed limit at 40. So, I mean, in the mindset of conservation of water, we're giving single families a whole lot more access to water in Kelseyville than you are in Spring Valley, and I'm just kind of, how does that work?
Yeah. If we could bring up that Spring Valley chart, I can point out which.
I know you said that's the average use, but...
And it's nine for Spring Valley. So, and that's where the tier break happens. So two, Spring Valley Advisory Committee wanted to see something in that base rate, that flat fixed charge. They currently get 12. So they wanted to see something that was in there. We have to be delicate about what we set that amount at, because as Allison was saying, if there's a user that uses one unit and then there's a user that used, under the current billing system, 11 or 12, they're paying the same. So it's not fair and equitable to the customers in that district. But the defense and the position can be taken that the operation of the water district results in a usage of water for each customer on their behalf, essentially, of a small portion. Flushing the lines out, testing, sampling, those sort of things, use up a small portion of the water that can be fairly distributed across all the customers. And then where that tier break happens, that has to be at a place where it can be defined financially. So if the average winter use in Spring Valley, which it is, is nine, then when summer use happens, the cost to the utility goes up because we're having to exceed that average, so our production costs go up. And that's where that tier break happens, because you can't set tiers arbitrarily. They have to be based on actual increased cost of production. Kelseyville, their average use is 18. So as you pointed out, it's kind of like that Speed Zone study analogy, that if everyone's driving that fast, that's kind of where the breakpoint is. Similarly here, if everyone's using 18 in that winter use, then those additional costs of production, us bringing on another well, we've got four wells out in Kelseyville, those costs can be directly tied to that above-average usage. So that's where that tier breakpoint happens. And each district is independent.
I get it, but that's still awkward in the sense of, again, water conservation is water conservation. It shouldn't be based on, have you been using a whole lot of water lately? And if so, we're going to allow you to keep using a whole lot of water versus if you haven't, we're going to set it up so that it continues to kind of push you in the direction. That's just me. My mind's not logically able to catch on to that. I feel like there's a very, there's something in my mind that's wrong with that, but that, obviously, there's a process to follow for any kind of nexus study. This is a nexus study of sorts. So my other one is nine-plus. If the average is nine, why can't we do a tier three to try and persuade people not to use 50? Because, again, in the idea of conservation, if we don't set up a high bar where it becomes super pricey, then people could just, they're at nine-plus, why not just continue using all the water you want and deplete the water source?
Yeah, that's a great question. There was a court case about that. So the San Juan Capistrano Court Case, it was about tiered water rates, and it was an agency that had a higher tier purely for conservation, purely as a penalty for high-water users, and that was struck down. It was determined that there's no, there has to be an underlying cost basis for why that is priced the way it is, that high, like, penalty tier. Is it based on acquiring another water source? Is it based on, hey, we have these conservation programs that we're going to put that cost into that higher penalty tier? Is it peak pumping? Is it, what other costs can you define for a super-peak or penalty tier? And we looked through the budgets and operational data of all the utilities and couldn't specifically identify a cost to go in another or super-peak type of tier. So we didn't feel it was substantiated and would comply with these court cases and Proposition 218.
Yeah, it's got to be defensible. Unfortunately, that was a tool that was, you know, utilized down in Spring Valley, but it's now becomes more of a code enforcement issue if there's illicit or illegal water use. We fall back on our rules and regulations for the water department and for the water district, and if they're outside of that. But if they're just using a lot of water and, you know, the plant production runs 30% even during peak summer times, you know, or maybe 40, 45%, so we're not at plant capacity. We're not having to bring in additional raw water sources, and we're not spinning up and seeing additional excessive costs. That same one unit of water costs the same amount to produce, whether they're using 18 or if they're using 50 of them. There's no additional cost to us. We can't penalize them with a conservation tier.
And during a declared drought emergency like we just experienced, at that point, you can set.
At that point.
Specific criteria of what the conservation strategy is. Okay.
Yeah, at that point, we step into our drought conservation plan, and we can ratchet stuff down. It's an order, and it's adopted by the board. So, yeah, we have those additional tools in those circumstances.
Okay. And those are all the questions I have. I'll just say, I'm uncomfortable, but also stuck between a rock and a hard place, because where do we get you the funding to be able to continue that? I do have a question, I guess. It's not a question to you. It's more, I question the decrease in the capital.
Improvement.
Improvements, because eventually you're going to need those costs covered. So I appreciate that you've lowered it, but at the same time, it gives me pausing concern that the future of that infrastructure is going to need some capital funds to be able to do that. And obviously, the cost of the increase of the rates is for more of the day-to-day than the overall capital improvements that you'll be doing to that. So lots of concern, but also I don't have a better idea of how it is that I can keep you whole and keep providing the service, because it's absolutely necessary.
If I can speak too to the capital reserves. We have, we have healthy capital reserves in Kelseyville. That's why we can reduce the amount. We're not eliminating them, and we're not without capital reserves. So we have capital reserves there to do projects. It's just at this point in time, there's no larger-scale projects beyond what our reserves already exist to justify keeping that fee in there. And the way rates are structured currently, it's a five-year plan. So, you know, the hope of the department is to get through all of our rate structures, modernize them, bring them compliant with current Proposition 218 requirements, current legislation, current rate structures and billing types, and then we'll be revisiting that on a regular cycle. So we shouldn't end up in a spot where we're, again, behind the eight ball and we're looking at 20 or 30% increases in that first year. Most of these rate increases, by the time you get to year five, you're looking at 2% or 3% increase, very, you know, equitable with the cost of living increases. And so the next cycle, we hope, will be there as well. And if at that point in time, we have capital plans in place that say, okay, we need additional capital funding, that can be a component that can be revisited.
Is there a plan for capacity studies?
Yes. The plan was to cycle through all the rate structures, because the rates are pretty outdated, and then go back and cycle through capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a question on the loan. What's the loan amount that's owed at Kelseyville? Because in here, there's a loan fee. Do you guys know that?
I think that was paid off, but...
I just had a curious question, because it was in there at $14.
I don't know if I have a lot of info about that.
Oh, just wondering how far it goes back.
Oh, yeah, that's the one.
What's left on the payoff.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of additional information, because we understand that revenue is then put in a debt service payment fund and is separate from the rest of the rate revenue.
And I'm not sure off the top of my head.
You could just send me, just curiosity on that, you know, looking what it goes back to, when it would be paid off, because whatever improvements you make, you know, if there's an opportunity somewhere down the road to get that loan cleared out.
Get that paid out.
$14 savings for everybody, you know. So anyway, just curious if you could send that to me. I greatly appreciate it.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Appreciate the presentation. Prop 218 stuff is hard. My challenge is mapping, so forgive my ignorance of these CSA areas, but I couldn't find maps on our GIS, and there's no maps presented here. So on Northwest, sewer connections, any of those within the Scotts Valley area, or is it all North Lakeport?
North Lakeport and then around the North Shore. So it goes North Lakeport, Upper Lake, Neesley, Cern, Conote, and Paradise Valley.
All right. And then Kelseyville apparently extends as far west as Corinthian Bay and Finley.
Corinthian Bay is a separate assessment district, but it does discharge into the Kelseyville system. So they've got their own billing structure, but they discharge into Kelseyville. And they pay, the Corinthian Bay district pays Kelseyville for the treatment and disposal.
I guess when the notices go out, they'll obviously get to the addresses that you know about. Is there any way for the general public to just spin up these maps of these various utility areas?
If they're not on our website, we'll put them up. I've got a really good 24 by 36, which identifies all our district, and I'll get it up on our website.
Okay. In addition to the mail notices, obviously, we want to be able to anticipate if there's opportunities for additional public input. And on the west side of the Kelseyville district, depending, and Corinthian Bay feeds into this, feeds into that, if the CIP isn't envisioning any potential for future tie-in with the City of Lakeport, and I know that's a pipe dream that's way off in the future, but at some point, Corinthian Bay and points west will either continue to kind of sit under this modality, but eventually, we're going to talk about purple pipe around the lake and stuff like that, too, right? So none of that is envisioned in the price modeling here.
Correct.
All right. And if we did some big project like that, that would, we'd have to come back and revisit these during the next 218 cycle.
This would probably be expired, and we'd be cycles down the road. The full-circle project I envision is probably 10 or 20 years, 10 years probably, 20 years for the local collection systems, probably then to be tying into it as a disposal method.
So it's premature to even ask about that now?
I think we don't have enough information at this point, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And I believe that regulation is that these rates can only be used to process for those that are paying the rates. You can't use the funding you receive through the rates to expand or do any other new infrastructure. It's only to utilize in the operation of what they're already paying you for. You'd have to get new money in order to do any kind of expansion to, whether it's connected to the full circle or connected to anything else. I don't pay rates for my thing, so you can expand it to someone else's property.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's very... So it's very enterprise funding, specific to what it needs to be used for.
See, no further pens up. Let's open it up for public comment. And no hands in Zoom, and no one getting up in the chamber. And this was just a receiving of the presentation with any questions or comments, but no action needed at this moment. Do you need our blessing to move forward with Prop 218? Would that be better as a motion to say we accept this study?
That might be helpful. It's not agendaized, though, as the items. I don't know if.
Okay. So y'all have to bring it back to us in order to initiate the Prop 218?
I don't know.
As far as the Prop 218 issue, it is not part of the board's scope on the recommended actions, so certainly staff can look into that. And it is a presentation. That's the part of the recommendation here is just presentation. If your board does wish to move to receive the presentation, just for clarification, it would be doing so as the Board of Directors for Lake O'San. I believe that's the case. Is that right, Director Harder?
Yes. Well, no, I think this one is actually for, they're sitting as Board of Supervisors or Board of Directors.
Okay.
Because we have CSA two in here as well.
Anybody want to entertain a motion to accept?
So do we go as sitting as Locosan or just as the Board of Supervisors? Because it's a mixture. Should we do two motions?
Can you do all three? Because Kelseyville County Water Works District is separate from Lake O'San as well, so we have all three districts represented here in this presentation.
Or if it's unnecessary to make a motion and just say thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
Correct. Maybe we'll just leave it at that.
As long as you have what you need to go forward.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for entertaining the questions. Okay, next, you got a laundry list of things. Our 612 item, consideration approval of occupancy agreement for the Canuckti Gardens LLC development in Clear Lake. Director Harder?
Thank you, Chair. So this item before you is regarding the Canuckti Gardens Development Project, which is a 102-unit, low-income project in the city of Clear Lake. Construction is finalized, and the project is seeking, wow, that seems really hot, echoey. They're seeking connection to the public sewer system. They've paid their capacity fees. We've done the inspection of their onsite stuff. It's passed that satisfactorily. But the hydraulic capacity analysis identified mitigation improvements that needed to be done. So those are currently under design. The design is not anticipated to be completed until October, I believe, but we want to work with the developer and get them in. They've got some funding requirements. They got some IRS requirements. We want to get them in and using the project sooner. So it was determined that we could probably set up a bypass that would bypass their flows to a spot in the collection system downstream of where the impact would happen, so that there would be no negative impact on the sewer collection system. So the agreement before you today has gone through iterations back and forth with the development and is structured such to allow occupancy to account for their prorated share of the cost of those mitigation improvements, their prorated share of the cost of the bypass pumping system, and the cost of the hydraulic capacity analysis that they were required to complete. That's essentially what it is. That's where we're at.
Thank you very much. I know that this was an item that we had discussed when it came to us, where there was a belief of a potential impasse and to postpone the opening of the apartment complex. Appreciate the conversations that continued from there and a workaround of sorts to try to make this work, and I appreciate your flexibility and the conversations that we had with the developer as well as the city of Clear Lake. I know there's one thing here. Obviously, the big issue was the capacity, especially with the INI during rain and infiltration into the system. And so this is slated for the project to begin sometime in October. It's possible that the weather might change before then. I didn't see a specific date, and I don't think there needs to be, but is there a plan of maybe August or September to look at installing the bypass? Or are you waiting to see the weather changing and then installing the bypass?
The, I believe it's specified in here by October 1st is when it would, we would expect to see the bypass installed. If we see weather before then, I don't anticipate we're going to see heightened flows. The analysis showed that during the summertime, the project flows did not exceed and would not cause issues. It was only once we got into that wet season that they would cause issues. So from our perspective, we would envision the bypass going into effect, you know, that first couple of weeks of October, probably kick it off October 1st, have it in place before the wet season officially begins, October 15th, and then the development project is without worry. But once this agreement is signed, they're free to occupy.
Yeah. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Any further comments, questions? Supervisor Green?
Just a question on the bypass. How do you arrive at what a proportionate share is?
So the engineer that was putting it together looked at all the flows in the area, and they looked at the project development flows based on their, you know, their number of units and their fixture counts, et cetera. And it was about 10.6% is what they estimated. So the anticipated cost of the bypass is 285,000 plus 20%, minus 15%, so in that range. So we've set their proportionate cost at about 25,000, so about 10% of that from the low end.
We wouldn't be building the bypass were it not for the desire to hook up this new apartment complex, right? So are there any other flows going in the bypass?
Yes, there are flows upstream, but those flows upstream would need to be bypassed for the improvement project regardless. So because you have to take that section, that particular section of sewer main out of service in order to upsize it, you have to bypass anyways. So we would have a bypass, but our bypass wouldn't account for the additional flows. So their proportionate share covers their additional flows out of the total flows that are being bypassed.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's open it up for the public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no one getting up in the room and no hands in the chamber, and bringing it back to the board for action. CAO Parker or Mr. Guentavano? I'm not sure who clicked.
Mr. Chair, just based on the, what is proposed as the recommended action, for clarification, your board is sitting as the.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors for Lake O'San, and it would be a motion to consider, for approval of the occupancy agreement for the Canuckti Gardens LLC development in Clear Lake, and also to authorize the Lake O'San District Chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much for that assistance. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.